The council will come to order. First item of business is Pledge of Allegiance. Our Chief Cusick is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. If you please stand and join us in reciting the pledge. Chief, if I could ask you to come up here. Thank you. I didn't tell you that part. Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council. On agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council, citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Let me also add that the City of Lewiston pledges to practice and promote civility within the governing body, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of the city. Are there any citizen comments tonight?
Aunt Johanna, we said Frank, and I don't tell anybody where I live. People do know because Deanna Crum is still trying to frame me this time. It was really easy for the police to believe. Okay? Deanna called the police and was saying stuff, and whatever she said, Rodney would say. Okay? And anyway, and the police wrote, "This is strange." Okay? So I'm still being framed, and we have a new police. And when I went to a meeting that YWCA has every year, for two years, we stopped because of the Corona. Almost everyone with policemen, there wasn't fire, there wasn't social worker. I was only medical. Okay? I'm a retired CNA, search and rescue. I used to teach first aid CPR, and it goes on. Okay? So now, we had the speaker. He was FBI retired and also a 24-year policeman officer. Okay? Anyway, so they asked, people, hear me again, but this is important. He asked, you know, about human trafficking. You know, who is the people that are being human trafficking? And people said this and that, you know? And I raised my hand, and I said, "It's the homeless." And that's where the drug comes in. Okay? They drug these people that, you know, do they want to freeze? Or do they want to go to the hospital at St. Joseph's, get kicked out with no shoes? Okay? So this is a big problem, is drugs. And that's why there's a big drugs in the streets, because that's the way they dope these people out, so they take, steal their driver's license and social security card. Then I tried to get my birth certificate in July. Okay? And they red-flagged me because I wasn't at that address, so they're working on it now. So that is why people are homeless, some of it. Okay? Now I'm going to talk about this, you know, everybody talks about me, even at the Eagles. Is she homeless or is she not? Okay? When I was sitting there. Okay? Now they talk about John Michael. They says, "Oh, he's always driving around, you know, he eats at the coffee shop, dah 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 dah." And Bridge Street. Okay? If anybody sees a homeless, now, they're invisible for a reason. We get out and we scout for them. Right now, we have a guy who always has a bag on, and he's walking. He's too cold now, you know? And so I called John Michael, and we don't know, but he's going to lose his fingers. I dropped off where, a hiding place to get stuff. So this is your problem. And just to remind you, I only want Kathy. So you guys all do not run, because I helped, the Christians got everybody out but the mayor. Damn, I should say damn it, but I won't.
Thank you, Johanna. There was very good timing, too. Other citizen comments tonight? Malik, welcome. Please introduce yourself for the record. Remember to speak up clearly and loudly for the record. You'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay.
You can stand, just leave it there. We can hear you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just project your voice.
Oh, okay.
Be bold.
So my name is Malik Pryor, and I live in...
Speak up. You can, yeah, just leave the microphone in the stand. There you go.
Okay, so my name's Malik Pryor, and I just wanted to express my concerns with you guys about the public transit. And yes, I'm with Johanna, the homeless thing, too. Yeah, the homeless have, this has definitely been an issue around here, and same thing with kids not having enough activities. I just really feel like, you know, it would be nice to see an improvement with all that. So, because I have been noticing a lot about this town, about why there's so much of those issues going on. So, that's it.
Thank you, Malik. Thank you, Malik. Are there other citizen comments? Okay, I don't see any, but before we close the citizen comments, I would like to recognize Mr. Jerry Chavez, who is the new director of the Valley Vision here in Lewiston. Once we get into the meat of our program here tonight, there's not going to be an opportunity to say this, so that's why I want to say it now. It's going to be a long night, but welcome. Thank you. Okay, councilors, that brings us to room numero number four, and you'll see that this is an amended agenda. And if you have the updated agenda, we made a change for that, so I need a motion to amend the agenda to include the modified language that is shown under item numero numero 8E.
Don't move.
It's been moved by Councilor Kleberg, seconded by Councilor Lickie to amend the agenda to include the modified language under item 8E. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is numero numero five, presentations. Item A, this, there's no presentation on this. It's just in your packet there, financial report for November 2022. Unless you have questions, councilors will move past that. Thank you, councilors. Numero numero six, public hearings and related action items. Item A there, public hearing, ZA-03-22, Form and Impact-Based Zone Amendments. Accepting testimony and proposal to amend the Form and Impact-Based Zone of the Lewiston City Code related to development standards, development qualifiers, parking regulations, and limitations, prohibitions of the zone. That is the subject, the way the public hearing process will work is that I will open the public hearing, we'll have a staff presentation, testimony from the public, if there is any, and then we will close the public hearing. You will have an opportunity to ask questions of staff, and please take advantage of that, if you choose that. So with that, I will open the public hearing and welcome Ms. Hollingshead. If you would please introduce yourself, Katie, for the record, and remember to speak up loudly and clearly, so those listening at home can hear you. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Katie Hollingshead, Assistant City Planner. I am standing in for Joel Plaskon tonight. And so in front of you is, like Mr. Mayor said, ZA-03-22, which is our Form and Impact-Based Zone Amendment. So the Form and Impact-Based Zone is a zone that was created in 2018 as the product of an objective as part of our waterfront, waterfront plan, special areas chapter of our comprehensive plan. It is a unique zoning district. It's designed to encourage highly intensive destination-oriented land uses in a highly, in a high-quality development environment in order to maximize the use and value of the land in close proximity to the confluence of the Snake and Clearwater Rivers. It's a point system-based zoning district where development must include land use and development aspects from a shopping list that's included in the zoning information and that has different characteristics of development. And so they use that shopping list to develop enough points to qualify for their building permit. And so different land use and development characteristics are assigned a range of points, and the developer chooses from those to get to the required number of points to move forward with a permit. So the reason for amendments, like I said, this zone is not very old and has only recently been tested. And we had a conditional use permit come through that kind of showed staff in processing, going through and working through the process of how this zone works and how development looks in this zone. And we found some areas that didn't work well for development, and they were kind of barrier. And so we went through, identified those areas that weren't as clear-cut or were showing a barrier or didn't take into account something that exists in the built environment that needed to be changed, so that the zone, zoning code works better when development comes in. And so in front of you, there is the different sections that we are looking at changing, remending. Erin, can you pull up the PDF map that I had sent you, please? Thank you. So this is our FIB zone. So in the light yellow color, that is the area that this zone pertains to. And so you can see it includes a section of downtown that borders along the bypass road, and the entire Twin City Food Site is also covered by it, and then a strip along D Street also. So within this zone, some of the items that Mr. Plaskon wanted me to point out to the council as the changes are being proposed. So there are different ratios for floor area ratio, which is how much of your property you cover up with buildings, and parking. So on, so in the actual ordinance itself, on the second page, under number two, floor area ratio, making an adjustment that any rooftop parking or rooftop patio would be included in that floor area ratio. This would allow for the encouragement of restaurants to have rooftop patios where you could eat, or if it was residential, like multifamily residential on the second or third floor, again, rooftop patio for those residents to enjoy. So that adds, that makes it easier for a developer to get to that point threshold, because it would allow for parking and rooftop patios to be included in that equation. The next one, just a paragraph down, under number four, is for properties that have more than one street lot front. So this zone, a rezone of a commercial to be C5 commercial. You can see the section of town that we're looking to rezone is in the red color with the black half hearts. And so this borders the Form and Impact-Based Zone that we just discussed. It also borders an existing swath of C5, and that continues from Fifth down to Ninth Street. So it's a fairly small piece that is still C4, from the bridge to Fifth and then jogging around D Street seven. Again, here you can see the ground zone, so to the north is at... Again, here you can see ground zones, so to the north is that impact based zone, to the south is our normal hill zone. C five is to the east and again outlined in black is our current C four section. And then this map is what's called our central business district. This is the overlay within our downtown corridor that allows for reduced parking minimums for businesses and multifamily dwellings. So I show you this specifically because the staff report does explicitly about the importance of. Central business district and downtown corridor and the intensity of that C five zone as a central commercial zone. And so. Staff do. Were sent. Four, how does that work with being. Is there a seat across the bridge? District have any beautiful old buildings. So as.
Yeah, so a couple of times it was referenced as a gateway. Is that a defined location, the gateway to.
So right here.
Right.
So this is the first section that you would enter if you were just coming across the Blue Bridge.
So the gateway doesn't extend down State River Avenue?
That zoning does not extend down State River Avenue, no.
Follow up. Gradient red will remain C four?
No, it's C five. It's up here, it's C five.
From that lot.
So that's the municipal parking lot on D Street is. And that's. Businesses and KNG Construction right here on. Review all of. Okay, so one of the two days. And it included. Of the notices that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are you ready?
Discussion. Post.
Thing map of the. Hi. Council Towsley. Council. Uh, I think. We. Here. And then. The. Our structure.
Miss Councillors. Uh, Council.